Good evening and welcome to the Portland City Council Regular Meeting for May 14th, 2019. Please join me in stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, the Lord's Prayer, and the moment of silence for men and women serving our country overseas.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father, our Son, and our Holy Spirit, be thy name, thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this great day, and forgive us our trespasses, as you forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Gilman?
Here.
Joel Friedman?
Present.
Beth Gilman?
Here.
Roseanne Hickman?
Present.
Brian Hill?
Here.
Margaret Phillips?
Present.
Please assist.
Present.
Thank you, Mr. Pipoly. Counsel before you. You have minutes from the March 12th, 2019, meeting and the March 26th, 2019, City Council meeting. Is there a motion to move on those minutes?
Second.
Move for what?
To accept the minutes from March 12th and March 26th.
Motion to the floor. Is there a second?
I will.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. All those in favor of the motion approving the minutes is stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. The minutes stand approved. The chair notes certification has been received regarding compliance with the rules and notification in the calling of this meeting. We have no guest presentations tonight, however, we do have two guests from Port Clinton High School, Ms. Lisa Gilman and Ms. Addison Martinez, in the second to last row, who are here for Student Government Day. Excuse me. I've asked both of them to stand up and just say a quick biography of themselves and how excited they are to be here.
My name is Lisa Gilman. I'm a junior at Portland High School. This is my first time here, but very excited to be here. I really enjoyed Government Day with Ms. Phillips touring all of the different buildings in Seinkford.
I'm Addison Martinez. I'm a junior at Portland High School, and I participated in Government Day, and I toured with the Mission of Assistant, and I liked learning about all the different things that y'all are trying to do in the city that not everyone can see, but they are trying to make an impact on our cities, and I think that's a lot to thank.
Thank you both. Welcome. We'll move to public comment. Ms. Pipoly.
Victoria Cummins, Portland, Ohio.
About 5:30 today, I was able to send the CNN news. I hope some of you got it. Maybe you didn't. Ohio made it on the CNN again for radioactivity in a school down in southern Ohio. The nuclear industry is very safe. They have safety at heart, but it's just those little radioactive atoms that keep getting away from them. Today, I want to talk about a bill called Retain and Retrain. Last September, the California Legislature amended with an act to add to their Public Utilities Code regarding electricity. The bill was brought forth when the Diablo Canyon Nuclear Power Plant announced their intention to close. California had already experienced a closure with San Onofre in 2013, so they were preparing for another one. The California bill laid out the future power plants for the whole state, but it also included the basis of a retain and retrain program. The bill would also require that the Public Utilities Commission approve the full funding of a community impact mitigation settlement and for the employee retention program. Under existing law, a violation of the Public Utilities Act or an order or decision or rule or a direction or a demand or a requirement of the Public Utilities Commission is a crime if you don't follow them. I believe these sort of changes can be done here, and I think they should be made now, whether nuclear plants stay open here or whether they do close. I believe these protections should be pursued by all the nuclear communities in the nation, and I believe that such, if you can't do it at the state level, it should be taken up to the federal level by amendments to the Nuclear Power Act and through the Nuclear Regulatory Commission. I have copies of the California bill and the changes they made to their constitution, and I'm going to forward them to you tomorrow, so you can look for those in your mail. And thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Ms. Pipoly, I have a hard copy of her prepared statement for the record. Understand there's a second public comment?
Mary Holm, Tree Commission, Portland, Ohio.
Speaking on behalf of the Tree Commission, we would like to thank the administration, the council, the citizens, and especially the fire department who hosted this year's Government Day. Again, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holm. We will now move to the mayor's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. The young ladies that are with us today from Portland High School will be reading my mayor's report as part of Senior Day, but before they get started, I think many of you in this room know that I recently took a trip overseas, and that was in conjunction with some employees I had last year from Thailand and Taiwan. This year, we're bringing those students back again, and the first of six arrived last Thursday, and I'd like to introduce everyone to Yam, or Gammy, from Thailand. So, welcome. If you see her around and about, she speaks great English. She loves rice. She also loves hamburgers. We found out the other day. And of all things, more trashish. So, with that, ladies, if you wouldn't mind, and again, when you're finished, if you wouldn't mind presenting that to the clerk who's at the end over there for her records.
Thank you, Mr. President. Discussing high water. High water and repeated wave action have displaced a substantial amount of the sand from our city's beach and are causing concern with other areas of our shoreline. We've been in communication with ODNR, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, EMA, Ohio Department of Public Works, State Representative, ARNDT, and Senator...
Yeah.
...to identify emergency funding to address our concerns and develop a plan of action to help prevent this from occurring in the future. Next, wetlands restoration. The contractor and several subs finally visited the site two weeks ago. City matching funds and in-kind contributions are still one of the biggest hurdles to the success of this project. We have, in principle, agreed to a timetable which would have some prime preliminary work underway a week or so on either side of July 4th. The bulk of the heavy lifting would occur in late summer slash fall. All of this is subject to water level, weather, and funding. The next topic is Jefferson Street. A plan to address post-phase-one paving has been established. The timetable for the completion of this phase of work coincides with the start of the Walleye Festival. Again, this is also subject to weather. As the extended forecast calls for repeated rains, Main Street and the city administration are planning a slightly different route for the Walleye Parade. Walleye Festival parade starting at Fourth and Madison, heading north on Madison to Second, west on Second to Monroe, south on Monroe to Sixth, and back to the high school. Additionally, contractors are well aware that the high ground must be cleared of all construction materials prior to the Walleye Festival carnival, vendors' arrival later this week. Next, mayoral appointments. Council has a current list of appointments. Several groups have already met. Others are planning on meeting very shortly, and the rest will only meet if, when their duties are required. There are two vacancies. One opening has been offered with a response pending. I'm still seeking an individual or the other, yet a third position, sewing slash property maintenance slash sidewalk inspector, has an interim tag associated with that appointee. The position has been offered on a permanent basis. Again, I am waiting for formal acceptance. Next, city email. Mr. Martin, Mr. Hatfield, Ms. Osterman, and myself met with a rep from Ohio Telecom to review multiple options for a new update. Email system for the city, a plan has been selected. Council, elected officials, and other city employees will soon be given instructions on what each of you will need to do to update your devices to more efficiently utilize the city's email.
The Second Annual Ottawa County Recovery Celebration will be held Sunday, May 19th, 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Athletic Complex. Enjoy food, music, door prizes, and family-friendly events. Enter through Sixth Street, and it is sponsored by Ottawa County Family and Children First Council. Sergeant Regoni Memorial Drive will be dedicated on Wednesday, May 15th, tomorrow. The National Peace Oxford Memorial Day at 1:00 p.m. This isn't good. The drive will run east-west from the intersection of 11 and 6, past the ER entrance and liflight landing pad. The dedication ceremony is open to the public and will immediately follow an event held by the Ottawa County Police Chiefs Association at the Portland Knights of Columbus earlier in the day. Thanks to the administration and board at the Greater Ford Committee, Ms. Tulliver. The public is asked to meet at the intersection of 11 and 6 approximately 1:00 on Wednesday, May 15th, early in the morning. Back the Blue 5K, congrats. Congrats to the FOPA for successful... How do you do? On a personal note, this is my first 5K, and I finished my walk just shy of 45 minutes. Not me, Mayor Mike Snyder. I've learned this is good enough with our place for all walkers. Thank you to everyone who dined, donated, and volunteered to work the pancakes for pyrotechnics event held at Alacard Cafe last Wednesday with the help of Andy and Marlene Banco, who donated the pancake cakes, anonymous donors who paid for the bacon and sausage, Lisa Black from Alacard Cafe, who donated all the beverages and facility, and yet another anonymous individual who dropped off a check for $1,000. The event raised $3,500 for this year's Fourth of July events, along with an additional monetary pledge from Bassett's Market. Mayor Mike Snyder is very pleased to announce that we have the funds for fireworks and all of their events planned for this year's Fourth of July celebration. New this year is a youth coloring contest being organized by the ladies in the front office at City Hall. Winners from three age groups, 35, 69, and 10 to 12 years old, will be selected for a wonderful prize. One grand prize winner will have the opportunity to push the button to start the fireworks show with special VIP seating for their family and friends. More details to come. Finally, on May 28th, I...
It also says wait for applause, right?
Yeah. Mayor Mike Snyder has an appointment at the Ohio State University, so he may not be in attendance at the next council meeting. That concludes his report, Mr. President.
Actually, it does not. There was one additional thing. I want to talk briefly about the Portland Senior Center. As many of you may know, the Ottawa County Senior Resources services several senior centers throughout the county, one of them being at the intersection of Adams and Third Street here in Port Clinton. Until recently, well, I'm not going to be... Ottawa County Senior Resources operates events on three days a week, and there's a contract with the city for that facility. Many of the individuals that utilize Senior Resources Services have created their own events outside of those prescribed and planned activities, which include both folks that use the Senior Resources planned events and others. Until recently, we didn't know who and when was going into that facility, so we implemented a program to control the key access. Individuals are still welcome to use the facility at any time, and we have those dates and times that they would like to go in, but they're coming now to the police station shortly before their planned event to sign out and pick up a key, returning that key then immediately following their event. The hope is that if the key doesn't get returned, an officer will go down just to do a welfare check. It'll also hopefully alleviate some of the side issues that have been popping up with uncontrolled use in that facility. Nothing severe, but we just want to make sure we get that wrangled in. With that, that does conclude my report, and thank you very much, and yeah, welcome.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? The auditor is not with us tonight, but counsel, he communicated with us via email this morning that he had received a concession stand license termination agreement signed by Speedway Rentals LLC and a check that they wanted to do, which we covered in finance committee that seems like, well, it was months ago. So, do I have a motion to accept the concession stand termination agreement signed by Speedway Rentals LLC and to authorize the Safety Service Director to sign an executed termination agreement on behalf of the city? Make that motion to accept. There's a motion from Mr. Friedman. Thank you. Is there a second?
I will second the motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Hickman. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With none, the motion carries, and the termination agreement shall be executed. Thank you. The treasurer's report. Mrs. Hanson.
Mr. Chairman, I'm pleased to report we're now up to $10,343.17, and with this being birdie week, I'm sure I'll have some good numbers next time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanson. Law Director's report. Mr. Wilbur.
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Safety Service Director's report. Mr. Martin.
I have nothing to report to see the mayor.
And his extended staff, so thank you. Police Chief's report. Chief Hickman.
Welcome in. I have nothing further, Mr. President.
Thank you. The police chief is not here. Under correspondence, you have from the...
Fire chief.
What did I say? Sorry. Fire chief's not here. Under correspondence, you have from the auditor's office, the April 2019 month-end report, and a postcard from the strength for the journey on Lockwood Road thanking Portland City Council for the memorial to Chris Galpin. There's much appreciated. I don't believe there's any other correspondence. Counsel, do you approve the correspondence as stated? Is there a motion to do so?
I move that we approve the correspondence as stated.
Thank you, Mrs. Sardi. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I will second.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Correspondence stands approved and disapproved as stated. Moving to ordinances and resolutions. We have no third readings. Under second readings of ordinances and resolutions, will the clerk please read Resolution 19-2 by summary and title?
Resolution 19-2, resolution to support nuclear energy in Ohio.
Resolution 19-2 this evening? Seeing none, that will move to its third reading at the next city council meeting. Mrs. Pipoly, would you please read by title and summary only Resolution 19-3?
Resolution 19-3, resolution to appropriate funds for the purpose of decoration for graves, conducting memorial services, and otherwise engaging in activities appropriate for the celebration of Memorial Day 2019.
Thank you, Mrs. Pipoly. Counsel, any action on Resolution 19-3 this evening?
Mr. President?
Mrs. Sardi.
I move that we waive the three required readings as to Resolution 19-3.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I will second that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Hickman. Any discussion on the motion? Mrs. Sardi.
This is, as Mr. Hatfield explained prior, this is something that we've done each year, and the two readings are needed to pass this because Memorial Day, our next meeting will be after that, so we get a third reading.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Pipoly, would you please call the roll on the motion?
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Brian Hill?
Yes.
Roseanne Hickman?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Joel Friedman?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Roseanne Hickman?
Yes.
Brian Hill?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Thank you. With all those in favor, the motion carries. Counsel, any other action on Resolution 19-3 this evening?
Mr. President?
Mrs. Sardi.
I move that we adopt Resolution 19-3.
Motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I will second that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Hickman. Any further discussion? Mrs. Pipoly, please call the roll on the motion.
Dave Bilow?
Yes.
Joel Friedman?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Roseanne Hickman?
Yes.
Brian Hill?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Thank you. With all those in favor, the motion carries. Resolution 19-3 is adopted. Moving to new readings of ordinances and resolutions for its first reading. Mrs. Pipoly, would you please read by title and summary only Ordinance 15-19.
Ordinance 15-19, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Safety and Service to submit an application to the Ohio Department of Transportation for transportation alternative program funds for the State Route 163 pedestrian improvements project and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mrs. Pipoly. Counsel, any action on Ordinance 15? Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mrs. Sardi.
I move that we waive the three required readings as to Ordinance 15-19. Thank you.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Friedman. Discussion on the motion? Mrs. Sardi.
We did discuss this at the last infrastructure meeting on 5/7/19. I let Mr. Martin explain a little more, and then I'll chime in after that.
Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance is necessary as the application date is Thursday for the transportation alternative program. This, we were approved to apply for a project being the State Route 163 pedestrian improvements project where we're looking at the crossing, the intersection crossings, starting at Buckeye and Perry, Lakeview Park, Monroe and Perry area to Jet Express, crosswalk at Jet Express at the Commodore Hotel, where there is none at this point. This will allow us to, due to traffic study, we'll look at it as a reason for the traffic study, move towards some sort of design enhancements for safety features for those crossings.
Mr. President?
Mrs. Sardi.
As I said, we discussed this at the last infrastructure meeting, and Mr. Friedman moved to waive the three required readings due to the time sensitive nature, retaining the emergency clause, and ask that council pass this on its first reading.
Thanks.
Pass to, with the members present, which was myself, Mr. Friedman, and Mr. Gilman, available, pass to you.
Thank you. Mrs. Sardi, any further discussion on the motion, which is waiving the three required Anyone from the audience, since we're looking to approve something on its first reading? Mrs. Pipoly, would you please call the roll on the motion, waiving the three required readings, Ordinance 15-19.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Brian Hill?
Yes.
Roseanne Hickman?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Joel Friedman?
Yes.
Dave Bilow?
Yes.
Joel Friedman?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Joel Friedman?
Yes.
David Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you. With all those in favor, the motion carries. Any further action on Ordinance 15-19?
I will.
Mrs. Sardi.
I move that we adopt Ordinance 15-19.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Friedman. Discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Brian Hill?
Yes.
Roseanne Hickman?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Joel Friedman?
Yes.
Dave Bilow?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. With all those in favor, Ordinance 15-19 is approved. Mrs. Pipoly, would you please read by title and summary only Ordinance 16-19.
Ordinance 16-19, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Safety and Service to apply for Ohio Nature Works Grant and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, counsel. Any action on Ordinance 16-19 this evening? Seeing none, that will move to its second reading at the next city council meeting. Mrs. Pipoly, would you please read by title and summary only Ordinance 17-19.
Ordinance 17-19, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Safety and Service and the city auditor to enter into agreements for the acquisition of four Ford police cruisers and related necessary equipment by release, by lease, slash purchase, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mrs. Pipoly. Counsel, any action on Ordinance 17-19 this evening?
Mr. President?
Ms. Phillips.
I move to waive the three readings.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Friedman. Discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Brian Hill?
Yes.
Roseanne Hickman?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Joel Friedman?
Yes.
Dave Bilow?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. With all those in favor, Ordinance 15-19 is approved. Mrs. Pipoly, would you please read by title and summary only Ordinance 16-19.
Ordinance 16-19, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Safety and Service to apply for Ohio Nature Works Grant and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, counsel. Any action on Ordinance 16-19 this evening? Seeing none, that will move to its second reading at the next city council meeting. Mrs. Pipoly, would you please read by title and summary only Ordinance 17-19.
Ordinance 17-19, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Safety and Service and the city auditor to enter into agreements for the acquisition of four Ford police cruisers and related necessary equipment by release, by lease, slash purchase, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mrs. Pipoly. Counsel, any action on Ordinance 17-19 this evening?
Mr. President?
Ms. Phillips.
I move to waive the three readings.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Gilman. Discussion?
We've been, we have been after these extra police cars for a long time, and want to make sure that we can get them as soon as possible, and we won't be long. Chief, do you want to say anything in particular about this, or are you comfortable with what you're comparing? Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Mrs. Pipoly, would you please call the roll on the motion?
Dave Bilow?
Yes.
Joel Friedman?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Roseanne Hickman?
Yes.
Brian Hill?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Thank you. With all those in favor, the motion carries. Ordinance 17-19 is adopted. Mrs. Pipoly, would you please read by title and summary only Ordinance 18-19.
Ordinance 18-19, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Safety and Service and the city auditor to enter into agreements for the acquisition of a water utility vehicle and related necessary equipment by lease, slash purchase, and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, counsel. Any action on Ordinance 18-19 this evening?
Mr. President?
Ms. Phillips.
I move to waive the three readings.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Gilman. Discussion on the motion? Ms. Phillips.
-we have been after these extra police cars for a long time, and want to make sure that we can get them as soon as possible and move along. Chief, do you want to say anything in particular about this, or are you comfortable with this?
I'm comfortable with what you're preparing.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Mrs. Pipoly, would you please call the roll on the motion to waive the three required readings?
Dave Bilo?
Yes.
Joel Friedman?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Roseanne Hickman?
Yes.
Brian Hill?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Thank you. With all those in favor, the motion carries. Counsel, is there any further action on ordinance 17-19 this evening?
Mr. President?
Ms. Phillips.
I would like to make, I would move to retain the emergency clause.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mrs. Gilman. Discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Mrs. Pipoly, would you please call the roll on the motion?
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Brian Hill?
Yes.
Roseanne Hickman?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Joel Friedman?
Yes.
Dave Bilo?
Thank you. With all those in favor, the motion carries. Counsel, any further action on ordinance 17-19?
Mr. President?
Ms. Phillips.
We move, I move to adopt this ordinance today.
Motion on the floor to adopt. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mrs. Gilman. Seeing none, Mrs. Pipoly, would you please call the roll on the motion?
Dave Bilo?
Yes.
Joel Friedman?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Roseanne Hickman?
Yes.
Brian Hill?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Thank you. With all those in favor, the motion carries. Ordinance 17-19 is adopted. Mrs. Pipoly, would you please read by title and summary only, ordinance 18-19?
Ordinance 18-19, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Safety and Service and the city auditor to enter into agreement for the acquisition of a water utility vehicle and related necessary equipment by lease slash purchase and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Counsel. Any action on ordinance 18-19 this evening?
Mr. President?
Ms. Phillips.
I move to waive the three readings.
Motion to waive the three readings on the floor. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mrs. Gilman. Discussion?
To get expediency-
Ms. Phillips.
...expediency and time elements. We need to get these, we're free from working on this a really long time. Our emergency services people have been talking about this, and we're just going to take care of this this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mrs. Pipoly, would you please call the roll on the motion waiving the three required readings?
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Brian Hill?
Yes.
Roseanne Hickman?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Joel Friedman?
Yes.
Dave Bilo?
Yes.
With all those in favor of the motion carries, Counsel, any further action on ordinance 18-19?
Mr. President?
Ms. Phillips.
I move to adopt this ordinance. 18-19. Retain-
Mr. Snyder is saying emergency clause.
I'm really writing checks on it. Retain the emergency clause.
There's a motion on the floor to retain the emergency clause in ordinance 18-19. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mrs. Gilman. Mr. Snyder, discussion?
Oh. Nothing.
Mrs. Pipoly, would you please call the roll on the motion retaining the emergency clause?
Dave Bilo?
Yes.
Joel Friedman?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Roseanne Hickman?
Yes.
Brian Hill?
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Did you call me?
Dave Bilo?
Yes. Thank you. With all those in favor of the motion carries, Counsel, any further action on ordinance 18-19?
Mr. President?
Ms. Phillips.
We move to, I move to adopt this ordinance, although it has 18-19.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mrs. Gilman. Discussion? Seeing none, will the, well, Mrs. Pipoly, please call the roll on the motion?
Dave Bilo?
Yes.
Joel Friedman?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Roseanne Hickman?
Yes.
Brian Hill?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion carries. Ordinance 18-19 is adopted. Moving to business from the floor, Mr. Hill.
Nothing for me to make, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Phillips.
Thank you, Mr. President. For those of you who did not make the Arbor Day celebration, you missed the time. I mean, it's not always the biggest group of people, but it's a very unique group. Also, many things going on about the city, but we must remember also that we have one coming from the outside. The Lighthouse Conservancy is going to do the boat house and the lighthouse itself to, forgot the date on it, but it's to show what you have up there on Waterworks Park as it is coming up. Mr. Hill, this is Joe first. Joe first. I'm gonna go with the date. Mr. Mark. That's right. Mr. Mark, that's around. It's too much stuff. Don't forget, we have two things going on tomorrow as well with the police department and the renaming of the street over by the Hafla Hospital, which I don't know how people can say there's nothing to do in Portland. It just really is. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Mrs. Gilman.
Thank you, madam. Mr. President. I'd like to thank, I'd like to thank Mrs. Fork and the students that participated today at Government Day, learning more about local government, and my daughter, Lisa, for reading the mayor's report. It was a joy. Tomorrow, there is a lot happening in the city. Tomorrow's the last day to buy chicken barbecue, chicken dinner tickets at the high school to benefit groups fund. The school does a lot of things to help students in the community, and one of the raise funds to pay for students that can necessarily pay for their meals or their lunch accounts, but the chicken dinner is on the 23rd, the last day to buy tickets is tomorrow. There's a host of other things happening. The mayor's report covered a lot of it. Thank you, Mayor's every one of the members. That's it, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mrs. Gilman, Mr. Friedman?
Nothing for me to make, Mr. President, for a time.
Thank you. Mrs. Hickman?
Thank you, Mr. President. My congratulations on raising the funds for the Fourth of July. It's nice to know that you have the funds to make everything happen, and I think everybody went out and helped. I couldn't be there that evening, but I heard it was a lovely event. Thank you to you students for participating. It's nice to see young people who want to learn more about local government, so I hope